Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our special meeting on that we have to have every quarter?
I believe so.
Mr. McCarter, do you want to make any comments?
Yes, I sure would. First of all, thank you for conducting a meeting and going back a little ways and sending a letter through to Senator Finley and Representative Owens on Greater Idaho. So far, Lake County, Harney County, Baker County, and Brant County have all sent letters forward to Senator Finley and Representative Owens, and Maloof County is tentatively going to do it. I haven't seen any, seen a copy of the letter yet, but it looks like they're going to send a letter up. And just a couple days ago, Senator Finley's office contacted me and we're trying to set up a meeting where we'll go over and meet with him at his office in Vail. To give you a little bit of an update, if you haven't watched the votes that have gone on, Clemeth County passed a measure to form a three-member committee to examine Greater Idaho movement and to look into the details. We ended up with about forty-seven percent of the vote in Douglas County and close to fifty percent of the vote in Josephine County, but neither one of those passed. We've redrawn the map and are currently changing our focus a little bit because it seems that eastern Oregon counties are impacted greater by the leadership, in a negative way, I guess, the leadership of the Oregon Legislature and the way that they look at us. So we're focusing almost everything now on eastern Oregon, right along the Cascade Range. We're not giving up on southwest Oregon, but we're kind of putting it into a Phase Two type step so that we can move forward. And from the very beginning, when we launched this movement in the beginning of 2020, we wanted to find out how the counties felt, how the people in the counties felt about becoming or potentially becoming a county of Idaho. And we were not going to force an issue on anybody or a measure on anybody. That was not our goal. Our goal is to move the border. So nine eastern Oregon counties have so far agreed with this and in some form or another that we need to start looking into it. Tomorrow, I'm submitting the signatures to Morrow County. They should be on the ballot for November with a similar measure. And then also later in the summer, we're just about got enough signatures to submit. Willalaw County, so they would go on into May's election of 2023. In addition to the potential meeting we've got coming up with Senator Finley, we've also made some end roads in the Oregon Legislature, and it's looking very good that we will have a hearing potentially during legislative days in September at the state Capitol. So that's kind of a recap of where Greater Idaho or move Oregon's border is sitting at right now.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment from the folks either on the video or here personally?
I don't know. We have a Matt Walker who is attending, but I don't know if I've given him any microphone privileges if he has any thing to say, public comment. But does anyone in the room have anything they want to give?
So, Mr. McCarter, what if we can bring up the conservative voter attendants and get a conservative in as governor? What do you think this will do to this?
Well, you know, the majority of the vote in Oregon, I think we all recognize, is in northwestern Oregon. And should we end up with a conservative or red wave pushback, and I hope that happens, please believe me there, move Oregon's border is not against seeing conservatives elected into every position possible. But it's likely that it would be a short-term situation because, again, the vote is in northwest Oregon and they're controlling basically what happens throughout the state. So on the other hand, none of us have a crystal ball on how this is going to work out. But definitely the voice that's coming out of eastern Oregon is large, and it's creating some discussion in the state Capitol with the legislators. They're talking about behind the scenes. So I want to go back and thank you, Commissioner, for your letter that went up and vocalized the issues of how we feel about the leadership in Oregon and the direction that they're moving. So I would hope that conservative leadership in Oregon, maybe that'll start making a change to what's going on. You know, I don't have a lot of faith in that because of the last twenty years it's gone the opposite direction. But I'm pretty much discouraged about the vote that came out of Oregon in the primary. I thought potentially that because there's at least forty people running for governor position in the primary, that there'd be a huge vote out there. And it's turned out just the opposite way, and I don't know whether it's voter apathy or what is going on there. It's beyond my purview, anyway. I think that the eastern Oregon counties did a pretty good job on their vote, but the rest of the state, the western part of the state, definitely didn't take in.
Any other comments? Did you want to, do you have anything, Commissioner? And Commissioner Schulberger is not here because he's got other county business elsewhere, so.
I'm curious if, Mike, have you seen the letter from Lynn Finley then and Representative Mark Owens that was sent to Baker County Court on May eighteenth?
A letter that Baker County submitted?
No, it's a letter that Senator Finley and Representative Owens submitted to Baker County on May eighteenth. Have you seen that letter?
I did not. I did not see it.
Okay.
I know that they're frustrated in the bills that they tried to put through this last session were pretty much snubbed. And of course, it was a short session, but still, they were pretty much ignored on issues that Senator Finley and Representative Owens felt that were important for eastern Oregon.
Yeah. It's a decent-sized letter, basically, though, that they sent to Baker County and basically just outlining the process that it would take for counties to join another state. And if you'd like, I'd be happy to share it with you. And I'm curious of whether or not, you know, how we can kind of share this response with the public too, in both this meeting and after, just anyone that inquires, because I think Senator Finley and Representative Owens did a very good job in terms of outlining the process going forward and just the complexities to it.
They want to just redo?
Yeah, I'd like to see that. You know, it's been a busy couple of weeks with the election taking place and reviewing a lot of material. I just don't recall seeing that particular document.
Yeah, it's fairly recent. It was on the eighteenth. Representative Owens was here, was it last week? And we had a conversation with him about this subject, and he forwarded this on to us just the other day to let us kind of see what they had sent to Baker County.
Okay.
I'm more than happy to read the letter into the record for this meeting.
Why don't you?
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and I'll read the whole letter into the record. Probably you read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Okay. So this was, of course, sent on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Dear members of Baker County Court, thank you for your letter dated May eighteenth regarding moving the Oregon border. We have an opinion from Legislative Council explaining of the process to be used for an Oregon county to become a county within the state of Idaho. That outline is included here. They quote Article, Article Four, Section Three of the United States Constitution governs a process a county must follow to transfer from one state to another. Article Four, Section Three provides in relevant part that no new state shall be formed or erected within the jurisdiction of any other state, nor any state be formed by the junction of two or more states or parts of states without the consent of the legislatures of the states concerned as well as of the Congress. This is a part that we already knew. But the next part of the letter goes on, "In other words, for one or more counties of Oregon to become a part of Idaho, three steps must be taken. First, the Legislative Assembly must consent to the transfer of each county to Idaho. Second, the Idaho Legislature must consent to accept each county being transferred so that the county in question would become a political subdivision of the state of Idaho. The order of consent granted by each state legislature is unimportant, but the third step, obtaining the consent of Congress, may only be obtained following each legislature's consent. Legislatures make decisions by voting on measures. The Legislative Assembly could consent to one or more counties leaving Oregon by passing a bill or a joint resolution that so provides. The Idaho Legislature could consent to accepting counties using the same processes. While county and local officials may play a role in advocating for the Legislative Assembly and the Idaho Legislature to provide consent, county and local officials do not play any formal role in this process because the act of consenting to the transfer cannot take effect until consent is obtained from the other legislature and from Congress. Prudence dictates that any measure providing consent by the Legislative Assembly also include a sunset date by which the consent is withdrawn if the transfer has not occurred by that date. Congressional consent is obtained through Congress passing federal legislation that so consents to the transfer. The Oregon Constitution establishes two ways by which new state law can be made, either by the Legislative Assembly exercising the initiative and referendum power reserved to the people in Article Four, Section One of the Oregon Constitution. Although not entirely free from doubt, we conclude that the initiative power may not be used as a way for voters to obtain consent for Oregon counties to be transferred to Idaho. This conclusion is reached because Article Four, Section Three of the United States Constitution expressly requires legislatures to consent to a transfer, and the terms of the United States Constitution control over any conflicting provision of the Oregon Constitution."
Thank you for that.
It's not done yet.
Oh.
I was pausing for a moment.
That's page one.
That's page one.
Okay.
There's only another half of the page. As you are aware, if you do have any questions, Mike, you can wait till the end or you can feel free to interrupt.
No, I, what you're reading, I totally agree with.
Yeah.
And again, the vote that's taking place throughout the counties basically doesn't say that that county is seceding from the state of Oregon. It's basically just giving an indication to the state legislature that there are sustainable problems or insurmountable problems and that they want to start looking into the possibility of becoming a county of the state of Idaho. So, no, I'm in total agreement. The other thing I want to say is that Congress has approved border changes quite often. I mean, I cannot even find in a record where it has not been approved by the U.S. Congress, once both the states agreed to an agreement there. And it's not creating a new state, so it's not initiating more senators or more representatives or anything else to it. It's basically just changing governance from one state to another.
Right. So I'll continue then with the letter. As you are aware, this is a very complex and divisive issue, one that we believe is directly aligned with frustration and anger from the segment of our constituents. Baker County citizens voted to hold meetings to discuss whether it is in the best interest of Baker County to promote the relocation of the Oregon Idaho border. As stated in the Legislative Council opinion, the Legislative assemblies must consent to the transfer of each county to Idaho. We need a clear message from the majority of Baker County citizens that they support moving to Idaho, not just that they want the court to meet and discuss the matter. We are unwilling to ask the Oregon Legislature to consent to an action without a large majority of the population and the governing body of the county in support of the action. The vote simply required conversation on the best interests of the residents and was not a directive to move the border. We have stated the frustrations of the supporters of the effort and the fact that several counties held similar votes to discuss the measure of the Senate and the House floor and with several of our colleagues and will continue to do so. We believe any action on our part to begin movement of the border would be extremely premature at this time. Please let us know when the next scheduled meeting is that the court will have to discuss this matter. Hopefully schedules will allow and we can be there to listen. So that...
If I may interject something there?
Absolutely. That was the entirety of the letter.
Yeah. Way back in the beginning of two thousand twenty, when we started this process, the Secretary of State regulations that cover initiative petitions are very specific on what kind of initiative petition can be allowed. And one of the primary considerations there in those regulations, it said it has to be a legislative issue, not just an opinion, not just a vote to say, okay, would you like to become part of the state of Idaho? That doesn't work. They won't allow that to be a petition. So, you know, in some cases, we have reapplied to counties for at least ten times to try to get the issue on the ballot in some form that gives an indication of how the people of the county felt. The Secretary of State and/or their regulations will not allow us to poll county citizens on this issue. It just won't happen. Now, county commissioners can put an advisory question on the ballot, similar to what Josephine County did in this last election, asking the people, do you want to become part of Idaho like other world Oregon counties? That's legal from the commissioner's side, but from the people's side, we're not allowed to do it. Does that make sense, Mike, some of the questions and some of the meeting situations are worded that way?
Yeah, I'm following you. As far as what you're asking is that we would look at the possibilities of an advisory question, because what this is doing is it's putting the ball back in you guys' ballpark to get a better and clearer understanding of what the voters actually want to do, aside from just holding meetings. And you guys' frustration is to try and figure out how to articulate that onto a ballot measure as far as
Agreed.
how that would actually work from your point of view. But for us, you're asking us to look at an advisory question.
Yeah. If the counties, if Senator Finley and Representative Owens want to see an advisory question vote, then it can't come from the people. It can only come from the local governance of a county, which is the commissioners or county courts. That's the only place. Douglas County did it in November of two thousand twenty, and Josephine County did it in this last primary election, to ask that question. And that is legal as far as the Secretary of State goes. But we're not able to initiate it from the people because anything that we try to initiate has got to be legislated or create a law.
All right. Is there any other questions or comments from the public?
There is a hand up by one of the folks online. I'm going to see if I can give him some microphones. Matt Walker.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Great. Hi, my name is Matt Walker, and I live in Portland, Multnomah County. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. So I'm not a member, or I do not reside in Lake County, so you may be asking yourself why I'm concerned about this. Because I live in Oregon. I love the coast. I love central Oregon. I love eastern Oregon. I love the Steens Mountains. And this attempt to be part of Idaho for some of the state hits me as just not right. And again, I'm not in a county that is voted for Greater Idaho. But I think that this whole issue affects the whole state, and because I reside in the state, I have a say in it. I'll just make two points. Or actually, I've already made one point. I'll make another point. Just as the proposal to make a Greater Idaho, I do not want to be part of a lesser Oregon. And that's just not geography, but it affects legislature, it affects the number of representatives we would have in the U.S. House. So it's not such a simple issue as what I'm hearing and what I've gained from looking at the Greater Idaho website, that rural Oregonians just want to be heard more and because of that are asking to be part of Idaho. That just, to me, is not a solution to a problem that exists. And it may be easy for me to say, being in Multnomah County, I'm a moderate Democrat, but as I said before, I love the state of Oregon, and that includes all the counties, even if I don't reside in other counties or have a say in what the counties do. But those counties are a part of the state I love, so I disagree with this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew, for your comment. I'm going to comment on your comment. I'm Commissioner Albertson, here in Lake County. And I understand what you're saying. None of us want to split Oregon, but you called it right when you said we want to have a voice. The problem is, is that Multnomah County makes decisions for us without thinking ahead and thinking about how it will affect rural Oregon. And so this is the whole problem is folks on your guys' side of the mountain virtually direct the direction that we go without understanding our heritage, without understanding our culture. And we don't want to move to Idaho, but we want to have some teeth in the decisions that are made from urban areas and that affect us greatly. And so this is one way of doing that. And so I guess I appreciate your comment. I agree with you on most of it, and thank you for calling in.
Yes. May I just say something else?
Sure.
I'm not educated on how Salem, how it affects rural Oregon, since I lived in an urban area. So I need to do that. I need to look into that and contact legislators to find out more.
I appreciate you trying to educate yourself because that's the rural-urban divide is we don't understand each other and we need to understand each other a little better. You know, the big push is on diversity and equality, except when it comes to rural areas, and then our culture is virtually eliminated. And so I appreciate you doing that and looking into that. And you know, how you could help eastern Oregon as a whole and rural Oregon would be educate yourself on our culture and heritage, how we live, how we're great stewards of the land, and then educate other urban folks so they'll understand, and that would help us greatly.
Okay. I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I'll just leave with one more thing. I'm sure that other states in our country have a divide between rural people and urban people, people that don't think like they do. And I'm not seeing, at least now, where other states are advocating to be part of a neighboring state, so.
So have you heard of the State of Jefferson movement that's been going on for thirty years? That's Northern California, same deal.
Right, right. Yes, I have heard of that.
Eastern Washington, Northern California, you know, it's happened everywhere. And so...
Southern Georgia.
So, you know, it's happening everywhere. And that's the biggest problem is that it affects us greatly, the decisions that are made in urban areas. You know, hamstrings us on our farms, and we feed you guys, you know, on the east side, feeds the west. You know, hamstrings us on our farms, and we feed you guys, you know, on the east side feeds the west side. And catastrophic wildfire because urban areas have decided we can't log or take biomass out of the forest. And we, we had close to a million acres in our county alone burned last year. And we have to, we have to be heard. And so this is one direction. And so we don't want to eliminate the urban side either, but we definitely want to be heard. So. With that, I'm gonna move on. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, you want me to, they're in front of the camera?
No, you can just say it from there.
You're talking about not being heard. I'd like to point out that this has been going on since, for the last fifty years. Starting out in, my point would be our governor, Tom McCall, was spearheaded legislation to institute a bike path fund. I believe it was nineteen seventy-four. They passed a gas tax, a fuel tax. It wasn't just gasoline. It was all fuels sold in the state of Oregon, motor fuel, cars, pickups, trucks, whatever it was, at five cents a gallon. The idea was to build bike paths, scenic paths statewide. I don't know a whole lot of small communities in the state, in the eastern part of the state that were able to enjoy that funding. And as far as I know, that funding, that tax is still in force. I would like to know if anybody had an idea of how many trillions of gallons of fuel since nineteen seventy-four until now has been taxed, and where that money went. Talking about, you know, commenting on that last gentleman's comments there about the divide. One of the things that I've been seeing pretty much nationwide, but it's affected our state greatly, is a divide between liberal thinking and ultra-conservative thinking. It used to be fifty years ago, that divide wasn't that wide. People could come together and compromise and make a point. Now we've got decisions such as defunding Portland Police Department. When you have people like that that are speaking, voting majority, that have control through their vote over eastern Oregon, I for one don't trust them. The only way that I can see that we would have any kind of control over that is to separate ourselves away from the state of Oregon. There isn't any compromise. You can't go to the state house and say, hey, I don't agree, and have somebody actually pay attention to that and give that some sort of credence. It's pretty much one of those things where not only are we not heard, but when we are speaking it, we're ignored. It's not a case of not being heard. We're just flat out being ignored. And that right there is why, you know, you're reaching out to become a part of a different state. That's a desperate move, obviously. I mean, that's a that's an obvious, you know, no-brain, you know, statement. But you're at a point where you pushed a, a large segment of the population of state of Oregon into a corner where they have no choice. What do you do? When you can't go to your state house and have an equal vote? Whereas Idaho legislation does have that.
So go ahead and state your name for the record, too.
My name is Ken Eskelson. I'm a resident of Lake County. I work here, live here, support this here. We have businesses here. And we deal with the state of Oregon on a daily basis, with the trucking companies that we have and whatnot. And it is somewhat irksome when you put out as much money at a state level as what we do and not have any kind of say-so at all. But not only not have a say, pretty much just told to go pound sand. I mean, what you think, what you say is meaningless. They talk about industry. They talk about the Nike shoe company, and they talk about these big tech companies. Well, how many of those do we have in Lakeview? Or John Day? Or Burns? Or Baker City? I mean, these people are solars, ranchers, loggers, miners. This is what we do. We don't have big tech industry here. We support it through our tax dollars and through our, you know, through the mining and, and all the other industries that we have here. As you so eloquently pointed out, we do feed the rest of the state, either directly or indirectly. Why is it? For me, it's, you know, I, I have a lifetime Oregonian. I've lived here my whole life. I was born and raised in John Day, Oregon. The thing of it is I would never advocate moving the border and becoming a part of a different state if I hadn't felt like there was any other choice. But when it comes to having some sort of a vote, whether you're conservative or not, it's, you're just, if you don't meet their criteria or meet, you'll agree with them, the way our legislature is set up in this, in this state, we're screwed. We just suffered through a ten percent increase in, in PUC tax on trucks this year without any kind of say-so. We didn't get a vote on that. Right now, it averages eight hundred dollars a month per truck. And I got ten of them. So you're putting that kind of expenditure out to the state without having any kind of say-so? That doesn't include any of the withholding taxes on employee income tax or any other thing. That's just straight up PUC tax. So I understand people, you know, the angst and feeling, oh, gosh, I don't want to disturb the state of Oregon. I've lived here all my life and I like the Steens Mountains, or I like the coast, or I like whatever. Well, we're not talking about abolishing the Steens Mountains or the coast, whatever. You're still plenty free to go travel and enjoy it. But the problem is, is nobody is paying attention to the fact that the eastern Oregon people have no say. Whether it's because we're not being heard or because we're being ignored.
Copy that. Any other comments?
May I chime in again, this is my?
Yeah, Mike Carter has his hand raised.
You know, thank, thank you, Mr. Walker, for, for chiming in for, for stating how you feel about Oregon. And, and again, like the, the previous speaker, I'm a one-way Oregonian that's lived here for seventy-five years. Representative Gombert, and I'm not using politics, but a Democrat, a Democrat representing about the Oregon coast. When I talked to him about not being heard, he stopped me right dead in my tracks. He said, Mike, we hear what you guys are saying. We just outvote you. And, and it's that blatant in the Oregon legislature, which is hard to swallow that kind of pill. And as far as other places in the United States, twenty-three Illinois counties have voted to leave the state of Illinois because of Chicago's influence. I've been contacted by people out of North Carolina that want to, their counties that want to move. This is happening all across the United States, this urban-rural clash that's taking place. If there was any other way to get our voice heard and make a difference in Oregon, I would jump at it in a moment notice there. But right now, this is not a political movement. This is not a corporate movement. This is not out-of-staters trying to do something. This is a grassroots movement from eastern Oregonians, Oregonians, that are just fed up with what's going on. And they want to see a change. And if we're gonna be ignored, then why not let us go and become a county of Idaho? Thank you.
Any other comments?
Oh, yeah. But I want to make sure that the public has time to speak.
Go ahead.
Okay. I really appreciate the comments given today. I think, you know, we've, we've got both rural and urban in the room. We've got some perspectives here where we don't want to see things necessarily be divided in the state. But the problem is, there is a division. It's already there. This is a symptom of call it frustration, call it the fact that we are being ignored in large part. I've been to Portland as a commissioner. I've been to Salem as a commissioner. I've wandered the halls of the legislature with this guy and, and commissioners from all around the state. I've yet to see a commissioner from the metro area come to Lake County. If you go to if you go into the grocery store, however, anywhere in the valley, you will most likely find a block of Tillamook cheese. Tillamook isn't in Lake County. No, of course not. But the cows that make it possible for people to buy Tillamook cheese, which is made here in Oregon. Those cows are fed on alfalfa that is grown here in Lake County, some of the finest alfalfa in the country. We don't have the mold. We don't have the mildew. We, we, we live in a very dry climate. And we've been taking care of the environment in a very positive way for a very, very long time. Commissioner Albertson and I, and Commissioner Schulenberger, and several state representatives, both Democrat and Republican, had the opportunity to participate in a, a land tour just recently here in Lake County, where we went out and viewed Abert Lake and the Chewakan watershed, which is in the central area of Lake County. We brought several legislators down from the metro area that represent the Portland area. While they were here, they received some very angry messages from special interest groups in the Willamette Valley as to why they were here, why they weren't invited. And these are the same groups that were attempting to restrict water supplies and restrict the rights and the property rights of landowners in Lake County, even though they don't live here. Special interest groups that don't reside in Lake County or have any understanding of our watersheds, our environment, our biomes. And this is where that frustration starts to mount. Because once we start to make inroads, that rural-urban divide, where, you know, Mark and I, we've got to meet some pretty incredible people on both sides of the aisle. And for, for us, we're nonpartisan. It's not a, it's not really a partisan issue. It's it's the ability to hear the issues. And for our farmers who have been here for five generations, taking care of the land, dressing it and keeping it, as they feel is their moral obligation to do so, to be taking advice and feel political pressure from a population that covered the most fertile farmland in the state with concrete is very difficult to swallow. We're an agriculturally-based community. We, we are either feeding people and growing food, or we are feeding your food's food. You know, or growing your food's food. It's this, I think the recognition of the part we all play is gone. And we either have to recognize that, or in this case, and the reason why we've been mandated to be here by a vote of the people. We have to hold these meetings every single year, several. Because of the frustration that's mounted. If we want to fix this, it's gonna take all hands on deck if we want to save this state, if it's even possible. If we want to remember that we're actually, you know, one group of people. I've, I've taken some good notes on the comments that have been made. And I would love to see more participation from people on the other side of the state to, to come over here and understand what we deal with and how we live and how eight hundred dollars, you know, on just a PUC tax is a killer for, for a truck driver in a county without eight thousand square miles of land. And over seven hundred miles of just county roads alone.
Right.
You know, I drive, I have to drive, I have a hundred and sixty-mile round trip to my office from my house. And I'm, and I'm only in the central part of the county. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of done on this. That kind of made my point.
I feel like I guess I'd like to be hopeful that if we could educate somehow the people on the, on the west side of the state that would remain Oregonians that they would understand and somehow or another make some compromises. But I for one am not, I'm not confident with that. There's been fifty-plus years already of, of history of pretty much non-comp, you know, of uncompromising sticking it to us. You know, for lack of a better way to put it, it's not a case, in my mind, of not being heard. It's a case of just not, of just being ignored. And, you know, I feel like the only way that I can see where they can fix this state is if they gave Lake County, Malheur County, Klamath County, and any of the rest of these eastern counties, an equal vote in the legislature in this state, where Multnomah County couldn't outvote us. That would be the only way. And then you would have an equal say. And then if you had a majority of the counties have decided that that's how they want to go, then so be it.
I understand what you're saying, Ken. It's, it's difficult under, you know, the current statutes and everything else
It, it is. And the thing is
Change the way that the House and the Senate are.
Yeah. And the thing, it's, it's very disheartening and frustrating when people say, or they have the attitude, well, you're just not enough of an Oregonian and you don't care about our state. It's not that. We're to a point where it's past that at this point. It's just sheer survival.
So with your comment about having each county have legislative equal vote, that's kind of how it is with our Association of Oregon Counties, or AOC. And it, the just, a lot of the opposite is happening there. Because eastern Oregon commissioners stick together and we outvote the other two counties. And then they, then the, the bigger counties, the more urban counties that are in the Association of Oregon Counties threaten us that they're gonna drop out of the association.
Simply because they lose a vote?
Yeah. And so they're not gonna come and play ball if, they're gonna take their ball and go home.
Right. So the question that begs to be answered is what teeth does this Association of Oregon Counties actually have when it comes to passing these laws such as we're faced with now?
I, I think they're getting more, bigger and bigger teeth. And
We have a pretty good seat at the table. I mean, as an association, we have a, I mean, I would actually say that we played a big part in stopping the cap and trade bill also. You know, I mean, the Association of Oregon Counties, we spoke out in pretty good unison. And I had urban commissioners that actually joined me in that because I was able to make my case. And the fact that Lake County, you know, I know a lot of folks don't like solar. We have a lot of solar in Lake County. But I, but because of that, I was able to go to the legislature and say, hey, we've offset our carbon emissions, both abiotic and biotic. That's every diesel pickup and every cow. There's like forty thousand of them in Lake County.
And geothermal.
And, and geothermal and solar both offset our carbon emissions. And we are the only county in this state
Not the nation.
If not the nation, to have achieved that. And we did it economically, with no force, no legislative rule, not, not forcing anything down anyone's throat. It was just an economic choice of landowners to try and, you know, look at different opportunities and incentives. And when I was able to explain this, you know, and, and with an understanding that we can't farm and drive all these trucks with electric vehicles. But we will, we can produce power. We, we can we will, we can produce power. We, we can, you know, maybe play a part in this. So get off our back. You know, don't, don't be taxing my people more, making it more expensive to farm. Because that's only going to drive the cost of food up and drive the cost of living up and everything else and escalate it. I think we were able to make some really good arguments actually for the work that we have done.
I'm not, I'm not, um, taking anybody to task for things that are not being done at this point.
Oh, no, I understand.
The thing that I want to point out is, we have 50 years of history where we have not had the ability to get anything done. Maybe that's a little bit of a strong statement, but the, the thing that I'm talking about is there has been legislation passed through this whole period of time where it has been very detrimental to us. And I just still under, I still feel, like I, like I say, I love Oregon. I was born and raised here and, and all of that, and I get it. Uh, we have some of the best scenery and some of the wildest rivers in, in the nation here. Having said that, I don't feel like that should preclude us having an equal say at the table. I mean, if we have to move a state border and our address changes from Lakeview, Oregon to Lakeview, Idaho, I'm pretty much okay with that. It's not going to change how I do business, other than it's going to improve the financial outlook.
So with you saying, you know, we don't really have a voice, when Commissioner Williams and I and other commissioners from eastern Oregon went and testified on the cap and trade, we had two minutes.
Right. The thing that I'm getting at here though, Mark, is that's one issue out of a 50-year period of time.
I, I understand.
We get that.
And I get, I, I, and I'm not taking anything away from that. I mean,
We've only been here for like three years, so.
The cap and trade would have killed our state. Not just here, but the west side too. And what I'm, what I'm wanting to do is I'm wanting to have more of an equal say at the time this stuff is proposed. When there's, when they're saying, you know, this is a good idea, well, I need to say, well, let's look at that. And say, you know what? I don't want us to have to go clear to the state house and say, oh gosh, you know, well now we got to vote on this thing. I mean, that's, that's how some of this other stuff gets put through.
Well, what, what I was getting at though is, you know what the governor said after cap and trade failed? Revenge is best served cold.
Right.
And we,
That was her comment.
That was her comment. And she's been taking revenge on eastern Oregon mainly ever since, and, and rural areas throughout.
What was the next thing that happened for Lake County? Was we were, you know, during COVID, we were threatened with our prison closing, which would have been 100,
15.
150, yeah. I, I mean indirectly, indirect jobs. It would have been almost 200 jobs.
Right.
You know, for our community. And that equal, if you make a direct correlation to what kind of an impact that is for a county with only 8,000 souls in it, to Multnomah County, I mean, how many, what was that?
5,000.
Yeah, 5,000 jobs or something like that.
5,000 to one.
Yeah, one, 5,000 to one.
And that, that, that kind of,
Several hundred jobs.
The point that I'm making though.
Right.
You know, that's, that right there is a perfect example of the leadership in the State of Oregon that we have to deal with on a daily basis.
And, and how long did it take us, even though we still have our prison, how long did it take us to actually get to the governor where we could have a conversation with her about it? Even though she decided she'd leave the decision to close it for the next governor, which is kind of ridiculous. But, you know, I mean, if it's wrong, it's wrong. If you shouldn't close it, you shouldn't close it. The only reason we were on the slate to be the one that closed is because there's about 80% to 90% Republicans in this county. And it was a very partisan decision. It wasn't going to affect the bottom line. Our econo-, economic impact to the overall state was very minimal as far as they were concerned. And she didn't even listen to us. We have 36 counties in the state. That's it. It's not Nebraska where there's over 100.
Right.
We have 36. There's no reason why the governor couldn't make a phone call to each of us, you know, once a month. And just say, hey, checking in, seeing how things are going.
That's my exact point.
This is, this is, there's no communication with, with those branches in the same way.
Right.
And we have, we have one legislator, one representative now and one senator. And he covers, you know, ha- half of the state practically. And so, and, and it's mainly Republican. So, you know, like what are we, there, there is a partisan issue there. Now, we've broken down some of those barriers over the years, like Ken Helm and some of the others, who are actually willing to listen. And, you know, Betsy Johnson went to bat for us on the prison pretty, pretty hard. And I thought that was great. Um, because, you know, they do see the impact. And then somewhere in there, maybe there's a little bit of, you know, like, is this right?
Yeah.
And we appreciate that when that happens, when someone is willing to look at it. But it's there, it's few and far between. And that's why we find ourselves in this situation.
That's exactly right. And I, and, and like I say, having lived here my whole life and seen this and been a member of a family that was always self-employed on a ranch and repair and whatnot. I've seen how this has gone pretty much my whole lifetime. And it's to the point now where, okay, you know, yeah, there's a certain level of, of, we want to call it desperate hopelessness, where we're just pretty much screwed unless we figure out some way. And I, and I see this, that's why I support this greater Idaho movement. Whether or not it actually happens or not. You know, at the very least, maybe it'll get somebody's attention. Somebody will actually pay attention.
Well, I mean, we've got, we have a gentleman from Portland here today.
So we can blame our governor and Democrat party all we want, but I'm going to say something that if we would have voted in the previous election with Governor Brown and Bueller, there was only a 35% voter turnout throughout the state of Oregon for the Republican side. Lake County was right at that average, 35%. Umatto County was like 16%. If we'd all voted, we'd have beat her. This year, two days before the election was over, or all the ballots had to be in, Lake County was at 26.7% voter turnout. We made it to 46%. But this year, above all years, is our greatest chance to change what's going on in Oregon. With, you have Betsy Johnson, who's a moderate Democrat now, independent. You have Tina Kotek, who's radical left. And you got Christine Drazen, who's the Republican, um, candidate for governor. And this is how I see this playing out. If Oregon shows up in a rural, I know.
All right.
In a rural area and votes. We have to vote and we have to play our parts. Because when you have a 16 to 35% voter turnout, that's, that's our fault. You know, and so what I think we can do is make sure you tell everybody, you know, your vote does matter.
How do you convince them of that? When, when the general consensus is it doesn't matter what we say or do, we're being ignored, not just being unheard, but being ignored. So how do you, when you're having that conversation with Mr. John Smith and Patty Lee Oregon, what do you say to him? When you say, you know, when he is, you know, 65-year-old Kyle Ham has been here his whole life and he's dead set that he's not being heard or being ignored. What's the conversation? How does that go?
This, this is how I see it. If you had somebody breaking into your house, you would fight like hell to subdue or take them out, right? Somebody's breaking into your house throughout Oregon. What are you going to do? Lay down and die? And you fight like hell. And we have to fight like hell as communities. We can't, we've allowed this, you know, and to some extent, you know, and it's time that we take on the bully.
Well, that's what I see. So when you, I agree with you 100%. But that's what I see the Greater Idaho Movement doing. I mean, when you talk about taking on the bully, the most effective way to do that would be to find their, their, uh, tender spot and do it there, you know, and we have tried and tried and tried now and with, with limited success, I, you know, grant you with select cap and trade whatnot, but I have seen this for the last 50 years over and over and over, all this, whatever you want to call it. But not being able to have, you know, being, being just overwhelmed with this stuff, with the, with the, the ultra-liberal agenda. And the thing we do is it's getting to a point where I know people that have sold and, and left here because of that. I myself have got pretty deep roots here. I am not in the mind that I'm going to sell and leave here. Uh, whether or not this Greater Idaho Movement works or not, I can see some major problems coming our way. If that, if that actually got voted in and we were headed that direction, man, I see some major, major problems that would, that, that, that that would create, of course. Are they insurmountable? I don't think so. Not with the, um, assistance and support that you would get from the state of Idaho. After all, they do, they would have a dog at the race at that point. I don't, I don't, I, I have actually done a lot of business with Idaho and it's back and forth across the border and you look at what's going on in the state of Idaho as far as economic development and, and rural development and, and industry, the all different kinds. And you compare that to here and, and we're stagnant and have been for a long time. School performances is another one. I don't know the exact numbers, but I know that Oregon trails pretty low in the, in the level of school performance in public schools. I would like to see that change. I've still got young kids. And I would love to see that change.
All right. Any other comments from anybody else? So we're going to adjourn the meeting at 11:03. Thank you everyone for coming.
Thank you, everyone. I do see Michael Carter still has his hand up, but I wasn't sure if that was from before.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCarter. Appreciate you being here today. And thank you, Mr. Walker.
Yes, thank you.